It's five o'clock and all the committee members are here, so I am calling this meeting of the City Council and School Board Joint Committee to Order. Hopefully, everybody has access to the agenda and the couple of attachments that were included with it. We're going to begin with the invocation, and I've asked Mrs. Lowry to give us an opening prayer.
Let's pray. Oh my God, Heavenly Father, we come before Your throne. Thank You for this opportunity that You have chosen to use us to benefit the children and the parents and our community with the mission that's before us. Please give us Your wisdom, understanding, and discernment in what we need to make things go forward and make it productive, and we just thank You, Lord, for this opportunity and give You the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Opening comments from Co-Chairs?
Again, just thank you all for your service. Really appreciate you coming, the School Board members, the City Council members, the staff, members, the citizens. Thank you for coming to this supporting process. We're really focused on our children, and these are our school system. Maybe can be the best school system that would give them the tools they need to be successful. Thank you for your time.
And I'd just like to thank all the committee members for doing their homework on time. I spent most of Tuesday trying to distill what everybody had given me into one document for us to work from this evening, and so we will get to that in just a minute. However, our next order of business is to review the notes or minutes, if you like, from our previous meeting of March 27. Those are attached to the agenda. Are there any corrections that anyone would like to make to the minutes? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move for approval.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes from the March 27 meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the meetings are approved. So, onto our general business. We just have one item, which is a significant one. You have this document that I put together, which I've tried to include every suggestion that I got from anyone. In some cases, I got very similar suggestions from more than one person, in which case I just combined them into a single item here. At the very top, you can see that there were two recommendations we adopted by vote at our previous meeting, namely that we recommend the School Board adopt the plan coming to it from the Facilities and Finance Committee of the School Board. And on Tuesday's School Board meeting, Dr. Copeland gave a detailed presentation of that to the School Board. I hope that anyone who has questions about that has been able to watch that. The second recommendation we have already adopted is that we recommend that no School Board buildings be constructed during the current CIP cycle. That is fiscal year 2026 through 2030. Now, for the rest of these, you can see that what I've done is tried to group them into And what I'd like to do is kind of go through them category by category, starting with all the things I've listed under Category A. So, I will start things off by saying that I think there are some of these that are not really feasible.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I think I have something to add. You're not being when you're prepared to.
Okay, well, if you'll give me a moment to finish.
Sure.
Then I'll recognize you next.
Thank you.
Okay. I think items, this is under Section A, 2, 3, and 4. I'm not sure, these all concern asking that the CIP amount of $60 million, $68 million all either be made up front or be made available on some other schedule. And I have a question of whether that's even feasible. Can that be done?
Mr. Co-Chair, not without adjusting other projects that were in the CIP. Ultimately, we are subject to debt affordability measures that limit our capital capacity. The way we have this structured now is about the max of our current capacity. If we were to front-load any of the funding, then we would have to push out other potential CIP projects, which would create some difficulties. A lot of those projects, especially the large projects, are road projects that have VDOT or federal funds matches in them.
So, it would be problematic to try to do that. The other comment I'd make about those three is that those seem inconsistent with our recommendation to adopt the Facilities and Finance Plan that went to the School Board on Tuesday, because part of that plan consists of Phases 2, 3, and 4 that involve thinking ahead to what we're going to be needing to do in the next five years. And for us to make all those decisions at once in the first year kind of defeats the purpose of the long-term planning of that. Also, I think it creates a problem that if we spent all $60 million in one year, and then we get another cold winter somewhere that breaks the pipes in one of the buildings, and we may be faced with an emergency that would require us to reallocate some of what we had planned. So, those are my reasons for why I would like us to not adopt 2, 3, and 4. And I'm going to go to Mr. Missions next, and then to Dr. Copeland. Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Day. I'm going to get back to what you first said a minute, but I think the first thing that I want to do, looking at the whole document, is there are items on this document that aren't anywhere within the scope of the adopted guidelines within our committee, and I would just like to take them completely off the table indefinitely. So, I'm going to move and make this as a motion to table indefinitely. The following items from consideration is they do not align with the adopted guidelines governing this committee, and that's items C3, C4, C7, C8, D4, E3, E4, E5, E6, and G1. And to make it easy for you to understand the motion, in what I provided to you, all of those items are struck through on the document that I provided, because, again, those items have nothing to do with what we adopted as our guidelines do, so I'll make that as a motion.
Can we do those instead of doing them all at once? Can we do them category by category, so that when we're thinking about CIP, that's when we talk about those CIP-related motions that may be inappropriate? When we're talking about operating budgets, that when we look at the ones that are inappropriate there?
I think if that's what the committee wants to do, I'd be okay with that, but I do think that there are many of these items. Again, that's a motion that I've got out right now on the table to just strike those items from here, because.
So, there is a motion on the floor. Would you give us the list of the items that you go through it a little more slowly?
Sure. It's C3, C4.
Did you say B3?
C as in Charlie.
What about B, structure?
There's, let me take a look.
B3 is structure.
Maybe I'm reading wrong what I put on here. Hold on. B3. I missed B3. So, it's B3, C3, C4.
Slow down, slow down. B3, C3, C4.
C7.
B.
C as in Charlie.
Oh, you're jumping back and forth. There is no B7.
C, C as in Charlie.
C7.
C as in Charlie.
Okay.
C8.
C8?
Yes, sir. D4.
D4.
E3, E4, E5, E6.
E5.
And G1.
Okay. All right, so that's the motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I have a second.
And I could, may I speak to the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I'm moving to table these items. Again, that's B3, C3, C4, C7, C8, D4, E3, E4, E5, E6, and G1 indefinitely, because they fall outside our committee's guidelines. Examples, C3, smaller classrooms, and C4, school impact analysis. Focus on facilities planning details not covered by our infrastructure and budget scope. C7 and C8, community and grant task forces, propose new bodies beyond our defined role. D4, real estate tax rate increase for the city of Lynchburg involves fiscal policy changes. Not addressing our guidelines and way outside the scope of this task force. And E3, E4, and E5, monthly leadership meetings, joint meetings, and parent appointments to committees suggest ongoing collaboration unrelated to our short-term efficiency and budget focus. E6, appointing teachers to this committee as representation not specified in our membership structure. And G1, school board appointments actually defining how we would, recommending how we would, who we would appoint to school boards, deals with personnel selection, again, outside of the purview of this committee. These items don't fit our mandate to review infrastructure funds, budget, and efficiency within a set timeline.
Is there further discussion of the motion? Dr. Copeland, the comments you wanted to make pertain to this motion? Okay.
Just the CIP.
Okay. Are there, yes?
I just want to affirm that these are items that are valuable to discuss. I don't think they fall within the purview of the task force, especially since we haven't discussed them and the nature of the task force in our previous meetings. So, I would support the motion, but I do think as we go section by section, it would be good to have that on the table if something comes up that doesn't fit the agenda that we bring that up.
If this motion passes, then we won't be discussing.
Well, I'm saying if additional items come up, if we're going through and we see an additional item, it's something that we should be mindful of as we're forming our recommendations, that it falls under the purview of the task force.
Yeah, well, we will continue to discuss all of these. The motion on the table on the floor only concerns the specific motion that Mr. Missions has mentioned.
Correct.
If the motion passes, that means we will have struck those off, and then we will continue to discuss all the others.
Correct. I'm just saying, I'm supportive of the motion in light of, we do need to keep it tailored to the task force, and so as we're going through and reviewing, I think that should be how we measure some of these different items as we continue in our deliberation. But I am supportive of the current motion. I'm just asking that it be part of how we're assessing our recommendations to the fullness of council.
Okay. May I suggest that we look at these that have been mentioned one at a time, so that it's not flying past us too quickly. B3 was a recommendation that the city return to the practice of automatically returning the fund balance, the School Board's fund balance that remains at the end of a fiscal year to the subsequent year. There was an agreement in place until, I think it was either last year or the year before, when City Council rescinded that agreement. So, this motion would remove that recommendation. It would mean that we're not recommending anything about that issue. C3 would recommend that we, LCS prioritize smaller classrooms. We would remove that recommendation. C4.
Keep in mind, if I may, that it's not that the recommendation is a bad thing, it's that the recommendation isn't germane to the scope.
Yeah, I understand. By removing these, we're just saying this committee's going to be mute on that topic.
Because it's not our.
Because your point is, yeah. C4 was a recommendation to include school impacts analyses as part of any planning or approval process. C7 was to create a community task force, similar to what was in place for Heritage High School. And C8 was a task force to investigate grants and other LCS funding forces regarding building or renovation. D4 was a recommendation that the city return to the tax rate of $1.11 instead of the current 89 cents. E3 was a recommendation that the city and schools' leadership should hold monthly meetings for purposes of collaboration and communication. E4 was that joint meetings of the City Council and School Board be held twice a year. E5 was a recommendation to appoint current LCS parents to City Schools Joint Committee, that's this committee. F2 was a list of issues that ought to be considered in any school rezoning decision. And G1 was a recommendation that City Council prioritize appointing School Board members that have children currently enrolled in LCS.
F2 was not on there. F2 was not on my list.
Then I, okay.
So, what I handed you in the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're correct. F2 was not on the list.
What I handed you in the clip has it actually redlined through.
Okay. All right. So, I was just trying to make sure everybody, all the committee members understand what all the particular recommendations are that this motion would remove. Now, I'm going to go to Mr. Wilder next.
Thank you so much. I do not support the motion. Some of the items, well, a lot of items was some of the ones that I suggested, but I have no problem with that. But again, I just think that they were, to an extent, they might not be germane to the particular task force, but we'd ask for recommendations to be kind of put on the table to send to City Council, and these were some suggestions that we came up with to bring to City Council and School Board's attention, so we could probably address, not necessarily this committee, but maybe address as they go forward. So, that were just possible suggestions that I came up with to see how we could better serve our children. And so many times, we were saying, we never offer solutions. That's sometimes our biggest problem. When we have situations, we never, some people never offer solutions. They just want to say this and persecute our school system, that kind of thing, but they're not offering solutions. So, I wanted to offer some solutions, and to probably say that I'm in support of building the Sandusky, or I'm supportive of building more schools. I'm not going to offer some suggestions to that. That's why I put forth some of these recommendations. Thank you.
And I was thinking, did it, Mr. probably say before, there was a lifelong learning community? There's another task group that was supposed to be after us. I'm thinking a lot of these would fall into that.
Yeah, so the, the city did pass, City Council did pass a resolution, I think it was back in October that it passed, to create a lifelong learning committee, but that has not come to fruition yet. That committee has not yet been created. That's correct.
These are the life items that would be for that, because we are just for CIP and for.
This budget, this budget cycle right now. And this is our last meeting.
Okay, I want to let her finish.
No, that's pretty much it. That's pretty much it.
Mr. Connor, then.
This is our last meeting, so it wouldn't, to add parents and teachers to a committee that's, you know, just about to present their recommendations to their board or council, then, you know, we pretty much, as of June 30th, we're gone. So, unless there's a motion to continue this committee through, from the mayor and the chairman of the board, I don't see why we would consider some of these.
So, are any of these lists of recommendations that this motion concerns, are there any of them that any of our committee members would want to keep? If so, you can make a motion to amend Mr. Missions' motion by removing one or more of them from the motion to remove them. Any of these that someone would like to keep?
I'd like to make an amended motion that would go with the order you suggested, but first, go by each category and look at them that way. Thank you.
Okay. That's not an amendment to his motion, that's a completely different motion.
Okay.
So, I think if that's what you'd like to do, which was what I recommended, then we should vote against this motion and go back to what I said before. So, without meaning to be offensive, I don't, ruling that motion out of order. Any further discussion of this motion? Yes?
I do, again, just want to affirm that a number of these items are valuable items. Smaller classrooms, I think, are incredibly valuable, you know, but I don't think it's the purview of our discussion today.
Any other discussion? Okay, so, I'm going to call for a vote. I'm going to start with Mr. Connor. Yes or no for the motion?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Is this yes or no to go by the section?
No, this is yes or no to remove the motions that Mr. Missions indicated.
Yes, they don't, I think the lifelong learning would be better.
Mr. Wilder?
No.
Councilman Missions?
Yes.
And Mrs. Timmer?
Yes.
Okay. So, the motion passes, so the following motions are off the table. B3, correct me if I get it wrong, C3, C4, C7, C8, D4, E3, E4, E5, F2.
E6.
Was E6 one of the?
E6 was one of them.
Okay, all right.
F2 is not one of them.
All right, that's where I'm messing up. All right.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please.
The document that I provided you actually has these already redlined in them.
Okay. And then there was G1, is that correct?
Correct. And everybody in here should have a copy of that.
Okay. All right, so the motion is passed. So, let's go back to, go through the categories and think about the motions that we did not just remove. So, there are still seven possibilities. So there are still seven possibilities that we have not removed under A, and I'm suggesting that we remove two, three, and four for the reasons that I gave earlier. Those all refer to rearranging the timing of the CIP allocations. Now, Dr. Copeland, did you want to comment on?
Yes, I want to comment on the overall layout of the funding structure over three years. If you think about trying to start a project, you need some lead time on the front end to do design and engineering work before you issue construction documents and and put something out to bid. That takes time, so it is actually formulated such that you've got some money to do some projects with early in year one, some money to do some design and engineering work for the larger projects that will begin in year two, that might stretch into year three. And the example I'll use is an entire elementary school building renovation where you have to do a significant amount of design work, even bringing it through city hall for approval of of documents and things like that. But you might do that work over two summers, or if you have the capacity, you might do some work during the school year by shuffling students around. So if you front load all the money, we really don't have the capacity to spend 40 or 50 million dollars in one fiscal year, and I understand this money crosses fiscal years, but it was, there is a definitive approach to CIP management, that you have money to start design, then do construction, close out projects, and continue that design and construction process through the whole cycle.
So these three items, A, two, three, and four, all would be contrary to that, the point that you're making?
Yes, sir.
Now, I, it's not clear to me whether as chair I can make a motion or not. Mr. Missions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I I'm gonna oppose this, and and I'll tell you the reason why is, I know, Mr. Patrick, you had said that there was a number of transportation projects that would be affected, but I just don't see that. I'm looking at the CIP right now, and the majority of our FY 2026 proposed appropriations are actually in buildings, not transportation. We're looking at about 30 million, 600,000 in buildings on the city side, and then only 11 million on the school side. And I think that that certainly needs to be reversed. You know, when we've got crumbling school buildings, it 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 is what it is. Renovations in a public library just are not a priority when we have to fix our school buildings. And that's one example of something that has front-loaded appropriations in FY 2026. Now, again, this would just be a recommendation. I also see what Dr. Copeland said, and I appreciate his insight on that, but one of the concerns that I have is I also want to make sure, because I know how these things can change year after year, I want to maximize the funding that is appropriated to fix these school buildings this year, because who knows what the next city council could do to change that, right? So 10 million only this year for design, it's not good enough for me. We need to put a significant amount more into this to make it clear that this is our commitment. The buildings that our children are learning in, where our teachers are teaching in, that this is a commitment for them. And then I'm also gonna throw this out there, this will be my broad disclaimer for the night, that my wife is a teacher at Bedford Hills, and that I can weigh in impartially on all of these decisions and all the business that we have before us, because I'm a member of a group, which is spouses of LCS teachers. So with that, I do, I do think that it would be beneficial to 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 look at offloading the funding that we currently have lined up for some of these city projects, speaking from the city side this year, that just should not be a higher priority than our school buildings, and make sure that those funds are appropriated to our schools.
Oh, Mr. Connor.
One of my suggestions was, I gave two, I said either front load all the money, and I know you made a statement, I want to make sure we disagree. I don't think if we were front loaded all the money, that we would try to do everything in the first year, but it would allow us to budget even out further. But my second suggestion was to change the order of the allocations, to start with 30 million, so we can do some planning and architectural design, but also have some projects underway where we're not limited to just design, and we can actually get some projects started this fiscal year. So my second suggestion was 30 million, 20 million, 10 million, instead of 10, 30, 20. Get that, so we can have enough money to actually make a difference, actually hit some schools and get some stuff done. That would have been my suggestion.
Can I speak to the reality of how this funding lays out?
Yes.
Absolutely.
So you're gonna give me 10 million dollars in FY 26? That money's available July 1st, 26. There's a, there is not a window short of the EC glass track and turf and things like that, but there is not a window to design and engineer and get a set of construction documents out during the summer that I'm gonna get this first set of money. Okay? The second chunk of money arrives July 1st of 2026, which happens to be your first window to do a 12-week construction project. If I start construction on a renovated building, the day after school is out, which is what we would target to do, the first bill doesn't come due until June 30th, and it gets paid in July of 2026, which is when your 30 million dollars hits. So there is a method to the way this money is laid out based off of the project timelines, and your prime window to do any work in a school building is from the first week of June to the third week of August. So if you, if you, if you put 30 million dollars in year one, we'll just carry it over year two, because you won't be able to execute it. And it sounds to me like it puts, it puts an undue strain on what the city plans are. And that's it, I'm out of it, y'all figure it out.
So I have some questions, like things like roofs, a roof can be done during school, right?
Roofs are not this money.
Okay.
Roofs are other money.
Okay, so.
So this 10 million dollars.
What was in that list that Dr. Wodoka gave us included a lot of roof work?
Correct.
Am I right?
Because roof work is funded with cash, what we call pay-go money.
Okay.
And this money is bonded money. So there are projects that get paid with cash, and then there are projects that get paid with bonded dollars. So.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make my suggestion a motion. I know I cannot vote, but I'm gonna allow myself to make a motion that we remove two, three, and four under item A, on the basis of the reasons that Dr. Copeland just outlined. Now, Mr. Missions?
So, so with that, Dr. Copeland, the document and the presentation that were given to us, and you weren't here for this, so not, keep, keep, you know, just want to be clear that you weren't here, this was what Dr. Wodoka presented to us, of the 64 billion, I think it was, there was a significant amount of roof work that was presented in that. So when we're talking about the 68 million that is proposed, is structured in our CIP right now, however it is laid out, or is what you're telling me, is the pay-go funding from the city gonna be what repairs the roofs or replaces roofs? Because there was several million dollars of roof work, I believe, in that document as the prioritized, and and I'm just not seeing that amount of pay-go funding on our side. I'm speaking from what I've seen. So so my question is, where is that money if it's not in this 68 million, because we don't have that much in pay-go?
Okay, so based off of the layout of the funding, the bonded funding, 10, 30, 20?
Sure.
The entire CIP plan is being repackaged. I've had Dr. Wodoka working on that to determine what the capacity is for year one, what the capacity is for year two, based off of all those priorities and things that he shared with you. I couldn't tell you if that's the identical to exactly what he presented to you. I use the example of, historically, roofs have been paid for with cash money versus the larger renovations and things that are paid for with bonded money.
So, got it. So historically, that's been what we've done. Do do we know if we've got access to that document, to get that up on the screen, the the one that was provided? It should be, do we know what date that was? It was, I think, two, yeah, the infrastructure, because because I'd like to see what that total roof number is, because I just, I just don't see the amount of pay-go funding available.
There might be some roofs and bonded money, okay, but that was just, that, that, whatever was presented there, yes, I looked at it beforehand to make sure that it captured everything it needed to have, and that it laid out some level of prioritization in the way that we need to approach this stuff. But we are not set up to, I don't have, I don't have an engineer on staff, I don't have an architect on staff. My project manager's retiring in April, and it's been with us for 10 years. So we don't really have the capacity to execute large projects continuously throughout the year, because when you're in a building and you're trying to do a renovation and you're you're gutting a restroom in in a building, you're shutting down that portion of the building.
Sure.
So you do that heavy work in the summers.
Yep.
So it simply gets into the, you can't really get that heavy work done summer of 2025, summer of 2026 is your first opportunity.
But can do, they can do roof replacements.
Sure. We've done roof replacements. This year, we did one during the school year.
If we can scroll down on this to the, so we've got, we've got 4 million in roofs on the elementary schools, what's the total for all the schools? Do we, do we, 1.7, 0.4, keep going? So we're looking at 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 6 and 1/4 million of roof needs that I see on there, and and part of, you know.
Over 5 years.
Correct. And 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 me, seeing what I've seen, seeing ceilings that are collapsing in Paramount when it snows, those are pictures I haven't posted yet, but the actual suspended ceilings, the drop ceilings at Paramount Elementary School when it snows collapse, because the moisture seeps through, gets into the ceiling tile, and the whole entire classroom floor is covered. I got pictures of it. And seeing some of the things that I've seen that aren't gonna be necessarily, the EC glass, we have a leak in the gym, and the leak in the gym is damaging the court floor in EC glass high school and the basketball court. And every time that gets hit with water, if it happens in the middle of the night, nobody's there, then you're gonna have to get somebody to come in and refinish the floors. Now, I know they refinish them every year, but to have to refinish them in the school year, or patchwork or anything like that, those kinds of things get expensive. And when I, when I look at water damage from roof coming into the building, I see that as more damage. I also see that as potential mold and hazards like that, and and I feel like that should be kind of a high priority, because if we can fix roofs without a significant amount of design work, or replace roofs, then then that to be, you know, anything that we can do to make the funding available to front load those things, I would love to see, because it's gonna prevent further damage down the road. I don't think a roof should wait three years or five years. I think a roof should get done right away.
I never said that.
And I didn't, I know you didn't, and I'm not saying you did.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not saying you did.
You guys figured it out, let me know.
And 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 my, my, my point is, is I think that we should front load as much of this as possible on the city side. It's a decision for us to make on priorities, this is a recommendation from us, but I just can't see, I I have a hard time looking at 11 million dollars for a library upgrade, right, library makeover, when we have issues in our schools that need to be addressed. And like you said, the funds would just carry forward. I would rather ensure that we commit those funds to the school division as many, as many dollars as possible this year, right now, so we know that next year, there can't be any changes to the CIP that prevent those funds or reduce those funds, because these, these dollars are fungible, they change from year to year. We got a parking garage, it started out at 28 million, it went to 60 million, and now it's 600,000 dollars. Imagine that. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. I just think that we need to maintain this, this CIP schedule, the funding schedule that the city has presented, because they put that out there based on the funding, the funding needs of the city, so what the city could do to that capacity. So I think it's important that we, whatever that amount is, we stick with that amount, the schedule that they have given us. And it gives back to my other suggestion, you know, we talk about so many needs, from the fire department, to city schools, to to streets, to libraries, to so many infrastructure needs in our community, and we, when you look at all the needs, that means there'd be more revenue coming in. That's why I suggested what has been scratched about increasing the real estate tax rate, because we reduced it a couple of years, a year, a couple of years ago, knowing we have so many needs in our community, from infrastructure, we talked about how schools have been neglected, how buildings have been neglected, because they don't have the, we don't have the funds to do those things. That's why they've been neglected, because they don't have the funds. How, again, when I was on the school board 15-plus years ago, Sandusky was on the schedule. And are we gonna move back? We're gonna do Sand, we're gonna do each Heritage now. So they pushed it back, and pushed it back, and I've seen it just happen, happen, happen. Again, because of debt capacity, of funds that we have, that's why I was suggesting we need more revenue in our city. It's not like anybody's wasting money, it's just infrastructure needs that need to be happened with all the buildings we have, aging building, 100-plus-year-old city, and certain structures need to be repaired. So that's why I was suggesting more revenue coming into our city. Thank you.
Mr. Patrick?
I just, some clarity on what's eligible for bond funding and what isn't. So typically, the standard we would use is, a project would be eligible for bond funding as long as the useful life that it extends, essentially, is going to be equal to or longer than the the term of the bond itself. So typically, we're gonna take out for maintenance projects for for what we're discussing here, 20-year debt, right? So if we do a roof project that extends the useful life of a roof by 20 years or more, that's gonna be eligible for debt financing. If it doesn't, then we would likely look for a cash source to to fund it. So I think, before we're able to determine what is and what isn't, there's a lot of work we're gonna have to go through to kind of refine some of these projects, understand the impact on the facilities, so on and so forth. The other aspect of this that I think is important, and we should, well, it's difficult to plan on, we should definitely keep in the back of our minds, is a lot of this funding is 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 likely going to be eligible to be matched by the the SCAP program, so the School Construction Assistance Program at the state. So I think strategically, looking at the projects that we have over the course of the next, you know, three years or so, and determining which of those projects might be good candidates for the SCAP program, which can receive up to, you know, a 30% match, I think it's gonna be, is is gonna ultimately be important. But there, there is some flexibility in what can be bond funded and not bond funded, but I think we've got to, we've got to dig a little bit deeper into the projects to fully understand which ones are and are not going to be.
I have two questions. Dr. Copeland, so you're saying it's to stick with the 10, 20, 30, or the 10, 30, 20, that it would be, that would be the good plan to stick with based on what you're able to do? I mean, like, what we would be able to do as a school system going forward? Is the plan that they presented the one you said to stick to, or you're saying we should get, like, the 20 million first, or?
What I'm saying is, all things considered, when you talk about starting projects, when projects will finish, the types of monies that you need, that the way it's laid out currently gives the school division the best options to move forward.
So the 10?
10, 30, 20.
Was it 10, 30, 20? Okay. My second question for Mr. Patrick, is what, based on what you said about the timing for bonds, so you're saying that we don't have to be concerned about this being swept away from us? Like, the, when it's time for the 20 to show up, it'll be there?
So, I say this, there's, there's.
Guarantee.
When council, a council appropriates the capital program one year at a time, and the, so it's a five-year capital plan, right? When council adopts that plan, they appropriate the first year of funding, and they plan for the four out years of funding. So the only thing that is set in stone, to an extent, is what was appropriated in the in the first year. So council, subsequent councils would have to come back and appropriate the planned funding in the out years. That being said, one thing I have seen happen is, we will have large appropriations made to a school system, and this isn't in Lynchburg, we'll have large appropriations made to a school system, we get maintenance work done. And it, good, solid logic was made, we need this money, we need it as quickly as possible. Two years down the road, three years down the road, we'll do an analysis of how much of that money has actually been spent, and how much hasn't, right? And a lot of it'll, the ability to spend it comes from the capacity, ultimately, capacity in the organization, and capacity to find contractors to do the work. And then I have seen situations where the school system has spent a small, only a small portion of the money that has been allocated to them, and then they catch a lot of flak from a council, so to speak, for not efficiently and effectively using the money. and effectively using the money. I will also tell you that if we were to appropriate all $60 million in the fiscal year 2026 budget year, so everything gets appropriated, there isn't anything that would keep a subsequent council from-
Taking it.
Taking, you know, away unspent money or unencumbered money at some point in the future. It's much harder than just not appropriating planned funds, but it has happened. So, the, I would tell you, the only money that's 100% safe is money that has a, a contract signed on a very specific project ultimately. But it is, it is definitely, you're less likely to lose money that had been appropriated.
So, all in all, that just scares me to death. But anyways.
At that point, you should pay attention to number seven.
Mm-hmm.
Because this is just saying we can't walk in, and money unless we have a signed contract, I would think this is about the best we can do.
Yes.
Recommend, please don't change the plan.
Yes, exactly.
Who thought to us about it.
Yes.
Now, let me return to the fact that there is a motion on the floor that I made to strike A2, A3, and A4, but I have not heard a second to that motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Are you, are you seconding it?
I just need a question.
Okay.
Is that in line with what the city is recommending?
I'm just moving to strike those as possible recommendations. If there's no second, the motion dies.
Um.
I'll make a second.
Okay. So, the motion has been seconded. Now, discussion of the motion.
I don't agree with that.
I, I made the motion, so I'm entitled to speak to it first.
Okay.
I think that a lot of what's been said falls into the category of we shouldn't try to do the job of the people that actually do the on-the-ground planning of the, of the repairs that need to be made. And I think the more we tie this down, the more we tie the hands of the people who have to actually do the work, the design work, the engineering work, as well as the construction work itself. So, my opinion is we ought to give them the freedom to decide the sequence in which to do these repairs. They know the priorities. They know where their roof is actually leaking and where it's not leaking. I think we need to let them do their jobs rather than trying to do it for them. Now, Mr. Missions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the logic behind your, your, your decision there. I won't support this. And I'll actually be asking to amend this in a moment. And the reason for that is specifically what Mrs. Lowry was asking about. And that is that we're not locked in past this fiscal year. The next fiscal year, there's nothing that can be done to prevent us from, from completely pulling the rug out from underneath us. And I don't want to see that happen. And when I see some of the things that are proposed, some of the items that are proposed in the current CIP for this fiscal year, to be funded this fiscal year, that are a much lower priority than, than, than the schools. And ultimately, this, this isn't even a decision of anybody but the city council. So, this is a recommendation to the city council-
Yeah.
-to say, you know what, prioritize our schools. So, so, with that being said, I'll make a motion to amend your motion and strike everything but A3.
Okay. So, there's a motion to amend on the floor. The motion is to strike everything except A3. So, in other words, if this, if this amendment passes, the motion will-
Can I?
Then the main motion would be to remove everything but A3. First, we're amending the motion.
So.
You're, you're adding, you're adding 1, 5, and 7, and removing 3-
No.
-from what we would, what we would strike.
No, 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 no. You said strike 2, 3, and 4. Is that correct?
Right.
So, I'm saying only strike 2 and 4.
Oh, that you're not striking-
All the rest, just 2 and 4.
Okay, all right. So, you're just removing 2 and 4 from the list of things to be struck?
So, 2 and 4 would be struck. That's, that's moving, because I'm looking at the numbers right now and, and doing the full 60 to 68.
Okay. So, the mo-
Could be tough, but I think the 30 could be done.
The proposed amendment, which has been moved but not yet seconded, I'm just trying to state it clearly.
Sure.
If you approve, the amendment would be to re-
Strike 2 and 4.
To change the motion, so the original motion would only be to strike A3.
No, the, to strike 2 and 4.
A2 and 4. Keep 3.
Keep 3.
Keep 3.
Okay. All right. All right. So, the amendment would be to change the motion, so we would only strike 2 and 4.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the mo, that's the amendment that's on the floor. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
You seconded the amendment?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Is there further discussion of that amendment? Yes?
I had a point earlier that I forgot. I'm sorry. These glasses really are throwing me off. But I, I do very much value what Ms. Lowry was bringing up as far as, is this money available to be changed in the future if we don't have it appropriated within this fiscal year? Additionally, I agree that this is a recommendation to council to encourage priorities and to encourage that the schools are our primary focus when it comes to this CIP budget cycle. I had another point, and I will raise my hand again in just a moment, Dr. Day. I'm sorry for that, but.
I'm, help, help me again.
I can't think of the first name. It's driving me nuts.
The amendment is to only strike 2 and 4. Okay. Are there, is there further discussion?
I do not support the motion. I support the original motion.
Okay.
Because it is aligned to me with what, more so with the city was, had requested. And the framework they put out there that would help their debt ratios.
Okay.
And then I don't think we're in a position to tell the city they can't do certain things like can't do libraries, whatever. I think that's really, that's over our limit of what we can do. Thank you.
Further discussion of the amendment?
I don't know if this is part of it, but I would probably stick to what Dr. Copeland said about the amounts we get because we do want to be good stewards of what we have and make sure there's no extra laying around. And we have it there. So, and we use it. So, it takes time for all this planning and stuff. It's just that, you know, I just, yeah, it scares me that the future could just wipe the rest of it out.
So, I'm not sure how that pertains to this amendment.
That's what I'm saying. Like, I'm not sure if I'm, I'm speaking to the right thing, but yeah.
So, if the motion to amend would change the main motion so that the main motion would say we only strike 2 and 4, do we want to make that amendment? Are we ready to vote?
Yes, we can make that amendment.
I vote no.
Yeah, then we'll go that.
Mr. Missions?
Yes.
Mr. Wilder?
No.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Okay. So, the motion passes. So, the ma, now the motion on the floor is to strike 2 and 4.
Hmm?
Okay. Now, that's where I said what I said. Okay. I've already said it.
Somebody, do we call a question, Dr. Day?
I want to be sure there's no other discussion. Okay. All right. Are we ready to vote?
Just clarification. Once again, all we're doing is telling our board and council what we suggest. We're not making policy. We're not-
That's right.
We have no power to make policy.
That's right.
We just say, these are the recommendations that we're making. So-
We're trying to decide what to recommend. We are, the motion on the floor is to strike 2 and 4 from the list of things we're considering.
I thought we already voted to strike 2 and 4.
No, that's what we just, yeah, we meant there's amendments.
Originally, I said strike 2, 3, and 4. The amendment was to remove 3 from that. So, now we only strike 4.
But I'm ready.
Okay. Then, Mr. Connor, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Wilder?
I'm yes.
Mr. Missions?
Yes.
And Mrs. Timmer?
Yes.
Okay. So, the motion passes. So, 2 and 4 are now struck. So, we still have 1, 3, 5, 6, and 7 here. This is going to take us all night, folks, at the rate we're going.
That's why my first thing was to get rid of a bunch.
And we did. We've still got a long way to go.
And we do.
So, I would also suggest that we remove 6 because that, again, I think is getting into this-
Yes, it is.
-the detailed planning and the sequencing of things, which I think ought to be left to the school division personnel.
So, are you making a motion?
I will move that we strike 6.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion to strike 6. This is the third motion this evening. We ready to vote? Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Lowry?
Yes.
Mr., Dr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Missions?
Yes.
And Mrs. Timmer?
Yes.
Okay. So, 6 is gone. So, we are down to 1, 3, 5, and 7. We've just eliminated the even numbers. So, let me just ask the committee of 1, 3, 5, and 7, are there any of those that you do not want to recommend? Yes?
Okay. I have a problem with 3. If, 1, like Copeland said, Dr. Copeland said, we don't, we should stick to the logical order the city gave us. 2, there's the bonds and stuff that go with that. And 3, the people on the floor doing the planning and the timing that it takes. So, I don't want a sitting on a lump sum of money that it'll take us time to use because even on our side, you know, not that it would be mismanaged, but monies can be dissolved somewhere else too. So, it can get dissolved from either side.
So, are you saying you would like to remove 3?
No, not remove it. Put it back to the order that we were originally supposed to get it.
Well, that, removing it means we stay with the original order.
Oh, okay.
This would reorder it. 3 would reorder it.
Oh, oh, no, no. I want to stay with the original.
So, you want to remove 3?
I want to change the order, not remove it. Just change it back to the-
It hasn't been changed.
I thought we started with 10 million.
The, the original order was what, 10, 30, 20?
10, yeah.
10, 30, 20.
That starts with 30.
If we adopt 3, which, that would change it.
Oh, I'm misunderstanding something. Okay.
You want it to stay as is.
Yes, started with 10 million.
Then we should remove 3.
Oh, I see. We just can't change 3 back around. Okay.
Okay. I got a question.
So, are you making a motion?
I would make a motion that we stick to the original.
Which means strike 3?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded. Discussion.
Um.
Yeah. You made the motion, so you're allowed to speak to it now if you want.
I just said why.
You already did. Okay.
And I concur with everything she's just saying.
Okay.
Going back to what the city had originally proposed. Thank you.
Mr. Missions?
I, I'm not going to support the motion. I do believe that we should try to front-load as many of these dollars to the school division as we can. It's the only way we can guarantee that the money's going to be there.
Other discussion?
I hear you.
Yes.
Got my hand up. Okay.
Sorry.
I'm not going to agree with the motion because of what the gentleman said. We could get to 10 million and then fis, fis, the next fiscal year, it could change and we will not get to 30 million. Or it could be changed to the second year getting 10 million. So, I think as much uploaded upfront, so we can actually be doing roofs and some of the work that doesn't require a lot of architectural and structural planning can be getting done while we're doing the structural planning so that we're not up against a wall. So.
And my, can I speak? Okay. So, and to that, I was thinking what Mr. Patrick said, though. They might say, okay, you have this money, but the next council could say, no, we're not going to give you this money. So, they could still, it's harder, but he could, they could still take it.
Yeah. He also said it's much more difficult for them to take it back once they give it to us than to not give it to us.
Yeah.
So, I'd rather have them struggle to get it back than to not give it to us when we need it.
Further discussion of the motion. Mrs. Timmer?
Um, thank you. I, I really respect what you're describing with the ARC. That makes sense to me as far as the time of appropriations and how it's released. I am not supportive of the motion simply because of what Mr. Connor brought up. And I think in the nature of the discussions that, this isn't to put it on you, but that I've had in, coming to understand some of the issues within the schools, not saying that this is your opinion and how it should be done, but in coming to understand some of the issues that are taking place, I would like to free up as much of that money on the front end as possible so that it is available as these assessments are being made and it can be allocated swiftly. And it, honestly, it puts council in a position where we have to prioritize this moving forward. There's been a lot of discussion about prioritizing it, but it really hasn't been there. And I think that this recommendation puts us in a position where it holds our feet to the fire in saying, are we really going to make, are we, are we going to make the jump and actually support the schools the way it needs to be done? And so, I think it's valuable to suggest this to council and then for us to take that very seriously in how we're assessing our priorities as a council moving forward. So, that, that's the reason that I'm not going to support the motion. I value the thought that went behind the timeframe and making this feasible and how those assessments are done. But I do think that council, we need to put our money where our mouth is. We need to support the schools and, and we need to fix the buildings.
I'll go with Wilder's first.
Mr. Wild, Dr. Wilder?
Yes. Put it where my mouth is. That's, I totally agree. That's why we need to increase our tax rate. So, it came out of her mouth. We need to put our money where our mouth is.
But that's not the point of this committee.
Application of mine.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not suggesting that.
That's not our job. This is not our job.
I think, I think we need to, I'm going with the experts. Again, you're like the Michael H. People.
That's what I said.
I'm going with the, oh, I know that would be horrible for you to do that. I'm going with the experts, what they suggested, looking at the budget that the city has already prepared. I think we need to go with that budget, that amount was comfortable for the city to do that. So, I'm, I'm going with the city and what was complimented said. So, that's why I'm supporting the motion. Thank you.
Okay. So, I did, after you spoke, okay, you said something that was eye-opening, that you guys have not been putting your feet to the fire on some things. So, without me knowing that, what about a middle? What about saying that instead of 10 million first, we get the 20 million first? And then we have more that we have in our pocket so that we can get other things done. So, council can't change that amount if they take this recommendation, hold their feet to the fire, but we have more than 10 million.
That's what you want to do. We need to settle this motion and then you can move to alter 3 if it's still in standing after this motion is over.
Dr. Copeland, does that make a little more of a compromise or something?
I'm out of here. Y'all figured it out. This is just a recommendation.
I think we need to vote.
No, it's, but in that regard.
We still take 4 people on their side to approve it. So.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I think, I think we need to vote. So, the motion on the floor is to strike A3. Okay. I'm going to start with Mrs. Timmer.
Um, no.
Mr. Missions?
No, sir.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
And in light of what I was told, now I know a little bit more. I'm going to say no.
You make the motion.
I know, but I didn't know information before she spoke, and that made a difference.
So, all you have to do is retract, all you have to do is retract the motion, right? Can she just retract her motion?
Not after, Spencer.
No.
Okay. Then I, I'll vote no.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the motion fails.
I vote we keep 3.
Okay.
So, thank you for that.
All right. So, we are where we were about 15 minutes ago. We still have A1, A3, A5, and A7. Mr. Missions?
I have one question for Dr. Copeland.
Okay. I think he's getting tired of questions.
On A1, this is right up his alley. On A1, I do believe that you had mentioned previously that you guys kind of plan with 4% per year on the inflationary increases planned. So, is that even necessary to even consider that since you guys are planning that?
Well, as Mr. Patrick said, when you appropriate one year at a time, then when you put together your spreadsheets and submit them to the city, if your project is in a future year, then it gets inflated then.
So, we're automatically doing that anyways?
It's already included. Just the longer you wait, the more capital you lose to execute the project.
I think Reed Waterco also said that when he prepared his estimates. He had an inflation factor for each year depending upon what year the project was going to be implemented. So, that's, I think, already built in.
So, we don't need that one.
So, would that be the case, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt 3, 5, and 7 as our recommendations for CIP planning and move on.
Second.
So, the motion is to adopt A3, A5, and A7. So the motion is to adopt A3, A5, and A7. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
No, sir.
We ready to vote? Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
Yes, I was going to ask you for their comments first. I'm sorry. But it's okay. Just give me their comments. They'll say no. Say no.
You said?
Yes.
Mr. Missions?
Yes.
Mrs. Timmer?
Yes.
Okay, so it passes. All right, we are done with A. So it's...
Time for dinner.
Three, five, and seven. Well, B is shorter.
Yes.
And we've already eliminated three. So there's two items here. The first, it would be that we would recommend the school's full request of a 5.5 million increase in the city's allocation to its operational budget. The second, B2, is the city should cease the use of categorical funding and return to approval of just the total school operating allocation. I think that's what some people call lump sum funding.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we strike down items B1 and B2.
So strike both of these.
I'll second.
So the motion on the floor is to strike both B1 and 2. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So...
He has the right to speak to his own motion first.
Mr. Chair, so supporting a $5.5 million increase in the city's allocation to schools' operating funds would require a tax increase. And that's simply not something we are in a position to recommend, which is outside this committee's purview, as established by our guidelines. Ceasing categorical funding also would reduce accountability when Lynchburg City Schools cannot explain the addition of 201 employees over two years from 1,317 in 2022 to 1,518 in 2024. In the documents that I provided everybody, you'll see that there should be a sheet that has a table from our annual comprehensive financial report on that. It looks like this. And when you look at that document, what you'll see on Table 31 also is that we can correlate these increases in staff with what's on the third page of that is the ESAR funds that were allocated from the American Rescue Plan and CARES to the city and to the school division, excuse me. So adding 201 FTEs was fiscally irresponsible, and it's fiscally irresponsible to maintain them. Assuming an average daily salary of $45,000, which is less than the base salary for a teacher, with benefits roughly estimated at 50% of the salary, each employee would cost $67,500 annually. For 201 employees, that's in the ballpark of $13.5 million per year, which is a significant burden on our citizens. I've also included Table 28 for reference showing the staff growth for the city in the same timeframe was only 71 employees. The second screenshot shows the distribution of those ESAR funds, both between the city and then what the state did as a whole with the $3 billion. And we spent half of what the average was for capital L.A. and almost doubled for personnel and employee benefits. Just not sustainable. The 201 employee increase from 22 to 24 correlates with this ESAR funding. These funds were for pandemic-related services, but the pandemic is over. We cannot continue to support these positions on the backs of local taxpayers. They can't afford it. These assumed pandemic-related positions are competing with operating funds needed for competitive pay for frontline educators and rising healthcare costs. Table 31 shows enrollment at 7,709 in 2024, near a 10-year low of 7559 in 2022. Yet, full-time positions are at a 10-year high. We should not have staffing at a peak when enrollment is so low. I acknowledge Dr. Copeland, his interim superintendent, had nothing to do with what happened here. This was not his decision, not at all. And I appreciate the hard work that he's been doing trying to right this ship since he got there. However, he's dealing with the fallout from poor leadership that led to this. If someone can prove that these positions aren't directly tied to staff growth from irresponsible use of ESAR funds, making the school division financially unsustainable, I'm open to that. But I've been asking this question for over a year to both city staff and school staff and can't get a straight answer. We cannot keep shifting irresponsible use of taxpayer funds back to an even greater burden on the taxpayer.
Okay, other discussion of the motion? Mr. Connor?
Okay, once again, this committee's job is to make recommendations. And we have a reason that we asked for the $5.5 million. And so I would agree to cut, to strike B2, but I think we should ask for the, because this is what we asked. He, we really needed 12. If we dealing with the whole 1,500 full-time employees, we really would have asked for 12. Was it 12.2, 12.3? But you knew it was wrong.
That's my number.
Yeah. So we already cut our number down to about 40%, 35% of what we really needed. So we've already dug deep. We're not competitive in a lot of our positions. We have to get competitive. We lose bus drivers. We lose people to competing counties. We lose teachers. So I think our new superintendent will look at pairing positions where necessary, but I still think that we don't have, I don't think it's wrong for this committee to suggest just request the full amount. We're not putting, holding your feet saying you got to give it to us. But if our job is to make recommendations, I'd like to recommend that we go back to city council and see if we can at least get some more of that operating fund that we asked for.
Mrs. Lowry?
And also, I will back that, too, as well, because if you said about the library, 11 million, why can't some of that be put here unless it's operating?
Operating first capital.
Okay. But still, yeah, we need that, we need that money. So, and I'm a taxpayer. I'll pay the, I'm willing to pay the taxes. And my kids aren't even in school anymore. But I'm willing to pay the taxes so we can get what we need for the school system.
Mr. Wilder? I do not support the motion, but I do support the increase of funding for our school system with the 5.5 million. Thank you.
Mrs. Timmer?
Thank you. Thank y'all. My, here's my concern with the 5.5. And it really has to do with what Mr. Missions brought up, is when one-time funding is used in an inappropriate manner, it expands the operating budget rather than addressing the CIP concerns. I mean, those roofs should have been paid with, with that pay-go money. So I'm not saying that a need isn't there, but I'm also recognizing that a need was largely created and how funds were misapplied in expanding positions that were not necessarily the needed positions rather than addressing the critical infrastructure concerns. So that's my concern with how this 5.5, as far as operating budget, is potentially being applied here. As far as categorical funding, I think it's, and I'm good with striking the motion to cease categorical funding, but I, you know, I ran on categorical funding because I think it's absolutely necessary. It's how our teachers have received an increase in salary. And it's been much, much needed to move some of the funds in the operational budget into the classroom where the teachers are interfacing with the students and the students are having, where the students are. We want the money where the students are. So I'm very supportive of striking number two. I have concerns about how number one came about, but I'm more negotiable on it.
Do you have something new to say?
I just, I just want to point out to make sure, Mr. Chair, thank you. I want to point out to make sure that the concern that I'm laying out here and the information that was just provided about the, was, what'd you say, was 12 million, I think, was what the ask should have been? That, that really aligns with my theory. My theory is that there were 201 full-time employees hired by the division in the last two fiscal years using one-time funds that never should have been hired. Not your decision. You didn't do it. And it may not be 201. It may be 180. It may be 220. I don't know. But there were 201 full-time positions added to the books in Lynchburg City Schools according to our last annual comprehensive financial report. That's the annual audit we get. And it was, my theory is that it was done with one-time funds. And if those were hired for pandemic-related reasons, reasons that we could spend CARES or ARPA funding, the ESAR funds on those positions, those positions, the pandemic's over. And we cannot continue to spend money as government as if we're still getting these massive federal bailouts. It's just not sustainable. I know one of the things that Mr. Patrick told me when we had a discussion, I think in the conference room upstairs, was that Lynchburg City Schools used one-time funds for staff, putting themselves on a fiscally unsustainable path. We have to correct that. We need to get back to what is fiscally sustainable. I've been asking this question for over a year. And Dr. Copeland, you have not been here for over a year. So this is not on you at all. You are, it's what you fell into. And I received deflection. I never got a straight answer. And I asked specifically, I remember my first school budget, are the employees that were hired using ESAR funds or CARES funds, however I said it, were they told that this was temporary and that this would end? And Crystal Edwards said yes. Today is the day. The pandemic is over. And right now, that 12 million that you're missing, that you need, a lot of that could be taken up by these positions that were told that they were temporary hires. And, and with that, what I have to say is that is created a situation where the bureaucracy has grown and it's impacting our ability to pay competitively to teachers and to pay competitively to retain these bus drivers and all of these employees because we've added all these extra positions.
Okay, Dr. Copeland?
So, just October 21st, I walked in the door. And the first, some of the first questions I asked were, give me the list of the employees that were riffed in June of 2024. Okay? Just throwing some numbers out here. 81 positions were removed from the budget from 24, from June of 24 to July of 24, plus 33 building-level substitutes, which were pandemic dollars funded. Okay? That's a reduction. I'm a Marine. I got to take off my shoes to count above 10. But that's a significant reduction to the number that's there. And that number that's there for the audit was the, was the number for June of 2024. Okay? So there are fewer employees now. And I have been looking very closely at how people were funded, who's in grants and who's in operating and all of those things. There also have been significant other grants that have come on board in the last 18 months. So you're not going to see a complete removal of these 200, whether it's 180 or 220 employees. But you, there was a significant reduction of somewhere around 100 and 130, 135 for the start of this fiscal year. So just throwing that out as a information.
No, thank you. And that's helpful. That's the first time, that is the first time I got a straight answer. And I appreciate that.
Mrs. Timmer, were you waiting to say something?
I was. I was just going to affirm that the, the application of one-time funding into the operational base budget, again, was also something that I talked about in the context of the campaign early on because the graphs demonstrate it. I don't have, I don't have my education binder with me that I utilized throughout that. But the research that I did and the statistics behind it really correlate with what Mr. Missions is saying. That information is very helpful in understanding the number of employees and how that's working.
And during the pandemic, when the governor gave 5% and 7% pay raises for state employees, the city gave no additional local match money. So I am led to believe that the school division used their one-time money to pay that portion of the pay raises to make sure that people got pay raises. Wasn't there? Don't know. But that's what it looks like from the backside.
Mr. Connor is next.
I just wanted to mention, to say something. Some of these additional positions, we've reduced since 2024, but some of the additional positions that are in here are partially grant-funded and they're dealing with behaviors. That's another thing that we have to address as a school division. One of the reasons we're losing, I'm on the discipline committee, one of the reasons we're losing some of our enrollment is, is behaviors in the school. So to push to make school safety and give the children that need that additional help, some of that grant money is, does not, it doesn't cover it all, but it is, some of that additional money is to cover these behavior specialists and some of those positions to help us get better control of our behaviors in the school.
Okay, now I am going to disallow any further conversation or arguing about the past. We need to vote on what we're recommending for the future. If another person starts to argue about the past, I'm going to rule you out of order and cut you off. Now, is there any further discussion of the motion that's on the floor, which is to strike B1 and B2? Any further discussion of that motion only? Mr. Patrick?
Just one very quick comment. Keep in mind that any additional money that operating funds that the city were to provide to Lynchburg City Schools would necessarily mean a reduction at someplace in the city, right?
Of course. That's city council's prerogative, too.
Absolutely. But if the, if the committee is going to represent or recommend an increase, I would ask that it consider also recommending adding new revenue to the budget to cover the cost so that the city employees potentially aren't the ones that suffer at those...
I don't think we're in a position to make that kind of recommendation.
All we're going to make a, all we're saying is we're going to make a recommendation that the city fork over the whole 5.5. Then it's up to city council to say we can't do it. All we're doing is making a recommendation. We can't increase taxes or do any of that stuff. But we can say, hey, we would like you to reconsider and give us the whole 5.5. And that's all, that's all, when we set up this committee, that's all they gave us the purview to do.
Okay, let's vote on this. I'm going to start with Mrs. Timmer. Yes or no? Do we strike B1 and B2?
Yes.
Can we amend his motion or...
I've started to call the roll. You can propose a new motion after this one is resolved. Mr. Mission?
Yes.
Mr. Wilder?
No.
Mrs. Lowry?
No.
And Mr. Connor?
No.
Okay. Now, do you want to make a new motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we strike 2, B2.
I'll second.
So you want to strike B2?
Yep.
Especially in light of new information about the people that were not done already.
I have no discussion.
Did that motion get a second?
It did. Mr. Timmer?
Okay. So discussion of the motion to strike B2.
Question. Can I ask the school system, how challenging was that for the category? Do you have to do category funding? Explain to me the difference in the allocation of the funds. I think we were doing category funding. How is it normally, what's the preference for the school system? Does it tie your hands too much?
It means that, it means that if we need to use, take unused funds in one of these categories and move them in another one, we have to come to city council for permission. Under lump sum funding, we can do that on our own call. And it's the school board's responsibility to oversee that. That's the difference. That's the reason I oppose categorical funding because it creates a lot of friction in the process.
That's why I do not support the motion. Thank you.
Other discussion? Yes?
I just want to reaffirm that I am in favor of categorical funding for the reasons I described earlier. Thank you.
So, any other discussion?
Okay, I have a little discussion. So the categorical funding means that what you just said, we can move it wherever we need to?
Categorical funding means we cannot without city council's permission.
Oh, I see.
Lump sum funding means we can make those decisions at the school board level. We don't have to go to city hall, have them pass a, propose a resolution, wait for two readings and a vote before we can do anything. It creates a two-month time lag.
Okay, so this proposed, this number two is saying that the city should not assign us categorical.
That would be our request of city if this is what we approve.
Yeah, not to give us. Okay. So then we would want to keep that. So we can move money as we need.
My opinion is we want to get rid of categorical funding.
Oh, get rid of it. I'm getting confused. Okay, all right, okay.
But I'm not voting. I'm just...
No, no, no. I'm just trying to understand.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
I was just going to speak to, categorical funding is larger pots. It's not line item as far as specifications.
There's nine categories.
So there's nine general category.
And one of them we don't use because we don't carry any debt.
Okay, that's great. So eight general categories. And it was the means by which teacher salaries were raised in the past by utilizing that categorical funding. So that's what, that's why I'm in support of it. All right, thank you.
Mr. Connor, we're voting now. Yes or no? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes to strike it?
Yes to striking two.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Wilder?
No.
Mr. Missions?
Yes.
And Mrs. Timmer?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion passes. So we are striking that recommendations. So we strike B2. So we're down to B1. Are we going to keep B1?
Yes.
Do we need to vote on it?
Can we amend, well, can we send back a recommendation for the city to continue to look for the difference?
That's what this would mean. We're just recommending that they, and it's up to them to see if they can do it, if they want to do it, if they can find a way to do it. We're just recommending, please find a way.
They might say yes. Never know.
Okay. We're done with B then. Unless somebody's going to move to alter or remove B1. Okay. On to C. Let's see. We have four items in C. We have one and two. We've already struck three and four. One would us to recommend that the school board make a decision to close a second elementary school in this 26, 27 school year. Number two would recommend that each school do an inventory of classrooms. Number five would be that we have a dedicated infrastructure repair and modernization fund. And number six would recommend that a school infrastructure reserve fund should be established. And let me make a comment about each of these.
Oh, Sam, would you mind scrolling? Sorry. Was that what, was that what was being requested?
And the other two are on the next page, is a prospect.
Sorry, we were looking at those pages. All right.
So you can't scroll it? No, it'll just break up.
Okay. All right. So let me make a couple of comments here. If you look at what was included in the description of the facilities and finance recommendation that Dr. Copeland went over with the board on Tuesday, it specified that in phase two, let's see. Well, phase three included a second, complete a second elementary school closure. So that is already envisioned in what is being, has been recommended to the full board. And we have recommended, already decided to recommend to the board that they adopt that proposal. So that's already in, implicit in our recommendation. I don't know that we need to state it twice. So for that reason, let me finish. That reason, I would recommend that we strike C1. C2, the school does this on an ongoing basis. The school did an inventory of classrooms that would be affected by the repurposing of TC Miller. The schools do that all the time. I don't think we need to tell them to do that. So I would recommend we strike C2. And as C5 and C6, it seems to me those are largely what our contingency funds do. So if it was up to me, I would strike all four. Mr. Missions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just so you know, when I put my finger up, I leave it until you're ready to call on me, so.
Okay. I don't want the blood to run out of it, so.
I think we're good. I appreciate it. I appreciate it. There's no turn to get on the finger, we're okay. So I agree with everything you just said. However, I do believe that for the purpose of making this recommendation, number one is a tough decision to make. And I think that leaving number one on there as a recommendation to city council makes it clear to city council that we are going to stand with our school board when they do what state law mandates them to do and find efficiencies and consolidate and that we are 110% behind you. Only, that's the only reason I would leave that on there is simply just to say, in addition to that plan, that we're recommending to city council, that city council gets behind our school board and the decision that they're making because that's a big one.
Dr. Wilder.
I'd like to make the motion that the ones you just stated, those numbers, I'd like to make that as a motion. And you numbered, what were the numbers again?
One, two, five and six. That's all the remaining ones.
I'd like to make that as a motion.
Okay.
For the reasons you stated. Thank you.
Does the motion have a second?
Second? You want the motion?
His motion.
His motion that we don't vote.
Is the same as what I originally suggested, that we strike one, two, five and six.
Oh, I would like to discuss, I'll wait till the discussion.
Did you mean to second his motion?
No. I'm waiting for discussion.
Well, we'll have discussion after we hear a second.
Okay.
If there's no second, the motion dies. Is there a second? With no second, the motion dies. So what's the committee's pleasure then?
I'd like to make a motion that we strike everything but number one.
Yeah, we've already struck three, four, seven and eight. So your motion would be that we strike two, five and six. Second? This is our eighth motion this evening. The motion on the floor, which has received a second, is to strike two, five and six. So the only recommendation that would go forward is number one from category B. Mrs. Timmer.
This is not a motion, because I know there's a motion on the floor, but I am supportive of keeping number one, but I think we could qualify it in a way where it references the larger plan and affirms, so that it's an affirmation of the larger plan moving forward. But it demonstrates the support to that plan. So that's not a motion because I can't make the motion at the moment, but that would be my suggestion.
The statement of it to refer to the.
Correct.
I'd happy to make a friendly amendment to my motion if the chair would allow that.
Okay. You're proposing an amendment to number one?
So friendly amendment to my motion to also include language that pleases you, something to the effect of, in accordance with the plan.
In accord with the facilities and finance plan.
Yes.
Okay. So that's a motion to amend. Does it have a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? For this, we're talking about the motion to amend the statement of number one.
I do. To say that, oh, my, okay. The school board should make the decision to close a second elementary school fiscal year as according to the.
Facilities and finance plan.
Exactly.
Now, let me point out that the facilities and finance plan says, complete a second elementary school closure in the years 28 through 29, not 26, 27.
But once again, we're just making a recommendation.
Maybe we just take out the specific years?
I would still leave the year in there. I would try to.
Well.
In which case tying it to this creates a contradiction.
In light of.
In light of.
Instead of in accordance with.
Yeah. It's.
To the fifth, to the.
You know, in light, because there's going to be millions of cost savings associated with that. And that's.
Yeah, we're not questioning whether to do it or not. We're questioning the wording.
Yeah.
And the other concern that I have is if you kick something down, like you kick the can down the road too long, then it's going to be exactly what happened in previous years.
So.
In accordance with the.
My suggestion would be leave it as it is. It's only a recommendation. Let's not create a contradiction.
Withdraw, withdraw my motion to amend.
So the maker of the motion has withdrawn his motion?
So we're back to the original.
So we're back to the original motion?
All right.
Which I second.
Which, okay. Any discussion of the original motion? The original motion is, under category C, just keep item one.
Have they spoken to the motion already?
I haven't spoken to my second. The reason I say we keep it is this hasn't been voted on by the board and it could be amended. So we could, this is the proposal that's coming to the full board. We're going to have a public hearing. But some of these key, some of these items within could be amended. So it could easily, so if we say to, we come back to the school board and say, we're thinking 26, 27, so we're not kicking the can down the road any further, that we're able to put our resources into the remaining schools and, you know, put the spit and polish on them, then that's, then we, when we vote on it as a school board, we may look at 26, 27 instead of further down the road. So that's why I say, as our recommendation, let's look at 26, 27. They give us a full year to let the public know, get input from the teachers, input from the parents and those type of things.
Dr. Wilder.
Yes, thank you. I'm just not in favor of closing any schools, so I just want to make sure that we go on record that I'm not in favor of the motion. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. The motion on the floor is that we strike out C2.
All of C except one.
Yeah. I wrote it down wrong. C2, C5 and 6. We have already struck out three, four, seven and eight. So it would only, C1 would remain. Okay. We'll start on the left this time. Mrs. Timmer?
Yes.
And Mr. Missions?
Yes.
Dr. Wilder?
No.
And Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
And Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. So that means, under category C, we are only recommending number one.
Yep.
All right. We're grinding along here. We're up to category D. These are motions pertaining to the city's financial planning. We have already struck out item four. So remaining on the table are one, two and three. Regarding item one, well, the city does an annual audit. So how would this be different than what we do, the city does every year? Yes?
I can speak to that. There's actually an ordinance for the city to have an audit committee and an internal auditor that's not been satisfied.
So do we need this?
And I would leave that in there because I do believe that that ordinance also gives jurisdiction over the school divisions with that. And I believe that it would be effective and a good tool to be able to dig in deeper to make sure we can, you know, free up monies and find inefficiencies and eliminate waste for interviews.
I've made a motion, we strike number one.
My question is, if it's an ordinance, what ordinance, what's the number and can we access?
We need to make a statement about it if it's already an ordinance.
That's what I'm saying. But if, okay.
Is it, is it our responsibility to this particular assignment?
Once again, it sounds like something that's out of the.
The city, the city has an audit, the school system has an audit. They both have audits.
Yeah.
Why would we tell them what to do an internal audit?
So Dr. Wilder made the motion that we strike item one. I have not heard a second.
Second.
Now there's a second. Discussion of the motion to strike number one.
Again, the city has an audit, the school system has an audit. I have faith in our auditing accounting staff at the city. They've been, she's been on for 20-plus years. We've seen several national awards for our accounting system. I don't think we're in a position to be telling the city they need to have an internal auditor. That just doesn't make sense. That's just, that's, that's not sounding like the committee from the school board and city council should be making the city council. That just doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
The motion on the floor is to strike D1. Further discussion? Yes?
Well, a number of things. One, I am very supportive of an audit committee. As a city council member, I think it's something that we've neglected in the code and that we are called to do. So it's not to discount any of the great work that's done by city staff or anything of that nature. It's compliance with code that we need to step into. But I am a little bit lost as to how this falls under the purview of the current guidelines. So that's my question that is available for discussion, but that's something that I'm currently missing in light of the other items that we struck.
Again, my personal opinion is it's already mandated. We don't need to mandate a second time. Mr. Missions?
So I'll be voting against the motion. The reason I'll be voting against the motion is because I think that it's helpful to have a body like this tell the city council that we should honor our code of ordinances, fulfill our code of ordinances and have an audit committee that would potentially help us find efficiencies within the school division. And to answer your question, Mr. Connor, it is Article 4, Division 5, Section, Article 4, Division 5 of Lynchburg City Code that's on the city's website.
So my second, my question to that would be, who is responsible on the city side to enforce that regulation?
City council.
It wouldn't be us.
It's a recommendation to city council to appoint the people into that committee that city council has the authority to do.
But it's already an ordinance, right?
But it's a recommendation for us to actually follow what we're supposed to do.
So I'm confused. Do you have an audit committee or not?
We do not. We are not in compliance with that section of the code.
So you're saying as the joint task force would make a recommendation to the city that they abide by their own code?
Correct.
Okay.
I see.
Any further discussion of this?
I don't know where this one came from. This one wasn't mine, but I support it.
Mrs. Timmer.
My question to the group is, and you may have just addressed this, but how does this fall under the purviews of this task force?
The CIP and budget? I guess it may not.
I simply can't.
Nobody's answering your question.
I can't, simply can't support or recommend, you know, not recommending that we follow our own codes.
Okay. Let's vote. Mr. Connor?
No.
Do you want to keep D1?
No. I want to, I want to delete one.
The motion is to strike D1.
Yes.
So your vote is yes?
Yes, strike D1.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes. Let the city handle it.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Missions?
No.
Mrs. Timmer?
We're going to vote yes.
Okay. Motion passes. So D1 has been struck. Okay. Now we're looking at two and three.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm going to move, make this as a motion to vote down items D2 and D3.
Motion on the floor is to strike D2 and 3.
I'll second.
Okay. You have the, I just speak to your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So establishing a sustainable funding formula for the Lynchburg City Schools operating budget, which is what D2 and D3, D2 is in the, D3 is developing a multi-year inflation and enrollment adjusted formula. Ignore the lessons that have been learned from Norfolk, Virginia and the inefficiencies that they create. So in the documents that I gave you and provided to you, I also provided with you a March 25th, 2025 resolution that was unanimously adopted by Norfolk City Council. And Norfolk's resolution that was passed unanimously. And just, just so people understand, there is a complete partisan difference between Lynchburg City Council and Norfolk City Council. This is a city council that is on the complete opposite spectrum on the partisan divide as we are. Calls for closing 10 schools due to surplus capacity that cost taxpayers $81 million over 10 years. Their enrollment dropped 21% from 31,000, over 31,000 in 2010 to under 25,000 in 2025, yet funding increased annually. This mirrors Lynchburg City Schools, where in table 31 that I provided to you, shows enrollment near 10-year low at 77.9 in 2024, down from 81.37 in 2015.[1710.88] enrollment near 10-year low at 7709 in 2024, down from 8137 in 2015. Norfolk's funding formula, which increased revenue despite declining enrollment, removed any incentive for efficiency, leading to surplus school and wasted, surplus schools and wasted resources. In Lynchburg City Schools, adopting D2 and D3 would guarantee rising funds regardless of enrollment, further burdening local taxpayers. Deputy City Manager Greg Patrick and Deputy Superintendent Reed Wodoka confirmed for us in one of these committee meetings that the funding formula is not required for our eligibility for SCAP grants, the construction grants, and we don't need these formulas for schools, so we don't need these formulas for school construction support. With declining enrollment, reducing state funds, and LCS academic outcomes not where we need to see them, we can't adopt a funding formula that shifts a greater burden onto our taxpayers year after year and, and creates a situation where we could end up like Norfolk.
Other discussion?
I'll speak to my second. Thank you. Um, as painful as these conversations have been over the past couple of years and as they often are, they're so valuable. Uh, and I find value in the fact that we have different opinions, we're coming together, and the tension of the two bodies is being forced to work out solutions. The school funding formula, as Mr. Missions pointed out, was sadly not successful in Norfolk, and, and in doing so, it removed the value of the discussions despite the pain that they are. So, um, I, I'd love to continue talking with y'all and appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Mr. Connor?
Um, I want to speak to, I agree that, um, we don't establish, as, as a school board member, I do not want to experience what Norfolk is experiencing. And it's obvious when we look at our enrollments that we have decreased from, um, 8137 10 years ago to 7709. So close to 500 students are, are no longer with us. And if we had a, a funding formula that did not take that into account, then, like you say, it would, can, we would put ourselves in a situation that Norfolk is in, and I really wouldn't want that to happen, where the city council would then force us to be more fiscally, I'd like the school board to be fiscally responsible and not have the city.
Now, of course, that would depend on the structure of the funding formula. You could write a funding formula that had a, that was dependent upon the actual enrollment levels, but.
But then, once again, if we, if we did it that way, and enrollment declines, but, so I, I think we, we need to.
Okay.
I, I think we need to avoid formulas.
Any other discussion of this motion? Again, a yes vote on this motion means we remove D2 and D3. Are we prepared to vote?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Timmer?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Missions?
Yes.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes. Um, Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connor?
Yes.
So the motion passes.
Unanimously.
So we have struck out everything from category D. We're on to E. There are only two items of E still standing, 1 and 2. Both of these concern either continuing this committee through the end of the year or version number 2, some similar committee. As far as item 1, part of our, understanding of our purpose was that we expire at the end of June. So my personal opinion is we should not be contemplating E1.
I can, I, one was mine. I can move to strike 1. I'm favorable to number 2.
Okay, so you want to make that a motion? We strike 1?
Yeah, or, well, yes, I'll make a motion to strike 1.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to strike E1. Discussion? Getting quieter as the hour gets later.
Comfortable, comfortable.
Okay, uh, I'm going to call for the vote. Uh, Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Wilder?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Missions?
Yes.
And Mrs. Timmer?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
Can we strike number 2?
Motion on the floor is to strike number 2. Is there a second? No second, so the motion dies.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we keep number 2, but change it to, um, at least meeting at least quarterly.
Okay.
So that it's not, um, firm as quarterly, but that it's at least.
All right, so the, the motion has been made to alter the wording of number 2 so that it says meeting at least quarterly.
Second.
Okay. I'm just writing it down. Okay.
Just, just to be clear, Mr. Chair, if I may, to, to just read the motion, um, so the motion would be to, either this committee or a similar one should continue meeting at least quarterly to discuss cost savings ideas involving both city and school resources, including possible mergers of closely related city and school departments in fiscal year 2027. So what that would look like is where we have our IT building, where Lynchburg City Schools, information technology, and the city of Lynchburg, information technology are in the same building, sharing the same roof under two department directors. That would be the best example I can give you of, of, maybe potentially merging those two to save our citizens' tax dollars and invest in the class.
Would this be, um, for your, um, motion to rename it the lifelong whatever?
This motion doesn't say anything about that.
Okay.
That's why it says, this committee or a similar one, and it would be up to whoever decides to do this, what it's named, what it consists of, what its charges. Further discussion of the motion to, um, alter the wording of E2. Is it just to alter the wording or adopt and alter?
It's alter and adopt it.
So the motion is to adopt with the altered wording. Further discussion? Okay, we're getting ready to vote. I'm going to start with Mrs. Timmer.
Yes.
Yes, uh, Mr. Missions?
Yes.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Another unanimous.
Thank you, Dr. Wilder.
Okay, so we've adopted E2. We're getting close to the end here.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, make your motion.
I'd like to strike the entire section.
So, so drag, strike both F1 and F2?
Yes, it's, um, that should be done within the school board. We, um, the Finance and Facilities Committee and, and other committees could, that, we don't, they, we know what we need to do.
Strike all of F. Is the motion, is there a second?
Second, the motion.
Discussion?
One thing I'll add.
Yes, Mr.?
I appreciate that because, because I do believe the Code of Virginia mandates the school division to do that, and I appreciate when our school board members are actually taking that seriously and following.
You don't want us to tell them to do their mo, their business, just like we're going to tell city council to do its business? Yeah, let's vote. Hang on a second here.
Strike the entire F.
The motion is to strike all items under F. I will start with Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Missions?
Yes.
And Mrs. Timmer?
Yes.
So motion passes, so all of F is out.
Mr. Chair?
Um, we're down to, we are done. Oh, wait, no. Oh, we got G. We struck G1. G1 is gone. We're down to G2.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt G2 as part of our recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second.
In unfunded, okay.
So the motion is to adopt G2.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second?
It's already been second. I thirded it.
Okay, discussion of the motion to adopt G2.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yes, it's just, just simply this would be to recommend that the new superintendent should audit staff growth and, and any unfunded services, um, and audit curriculum to make sure we're meeting new federal guidelines, ending radical indoctrination in K-12 schooling because that could affect our federal funding. We've already seen that happen in Maine, where federal funding was clawed back because of the inability to follow, uh, executive orders, and then also to implement efficiency and academic plans.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Mr. Connor?
This is almost like F. It's like the new superintendent's going to come in with certain responsibilities. I believe we're going to do our best to hire somebody that will be able to, um, do this without us telling them to.
So you're arguing against the motion?
Yeah, as I re, I, I had to read it a lot closer. Um, that new superintendent's going to carry a lot of responsibility, and I believe that if we, um, continue the path we're on with the selection that we're, the, the potential candidates we have, I think they'll be able to fulfill some of this without us having to suggest it. It's like, it's in the job description.
Further discussion? Mrs. Lowry?
And as a school board, we want the best for our kids, so if we see something that's not healthy in there for them, then we're going to make that suggestion to the superintendent, who is our employee.
So you're arguing against the motion also?
Yes.
We don't need to tell them this, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So you're arguing against the motion?
And we, and I believe the superintendent that we choose will, will abide by federal and, um, presidential, um, executive orders.
It's not necessarily, I'm disagreeing with what it's saying. I'm just saying we'll, we'll hold it.
Dr. Wilder?
Again, I don't think it's our responsibility. I think it's the school board's responsibility with a new school superintendent. Um, I don't think we should micromanage our staff members like some people like to do. I don't think we should do that. So I totally disagree with this. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Mrs. Timmer?
I'm on the fence because I miss jurisdiction. So I'm all about where's the appropriate jurisdiction? Um, the point that Mr. Missions brings up that has me on the fence is the component of federal funding, uh, in the case that he brought up around that, and that's more a city council issue. The, the management, as far as the schools and the school staff and school policies, that's y'all. So, um, I, I'm truly torn on this one, but.
Mr. Missions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just to be clear, the, the, the main, the main reason for this, one is, is to make sure we, as city council, are the fiscal agent for Lynchburg City Schools. So all dollars that go to Lynchburg City Schools flow through us, and I feel strongly that, that we need to protect the federal funding for our schools, and this is a method to do that.
And of course, the schools care about getting the funding from the federal.
And I truly believe that the makeup of the current school board is fiscally, more fiscally responsible, and I think, I don't think we need to micromanage this.
Mrs. Timmer?
The, my recommendation would be to change the wording of this.
I'd be open to that.
Of this amendment in some way, where it focuses on compliance with the funding component rather than a specific list of, um, action items.
Do you have a specific rewording to, to propose?
I do not.
Then I suggest, let's go ahead and act on the motion. If, if the motion fails, you can still, uh, move to reword the motion, and then we can vote on it again.
Okay, let me work on rewording over here.
Can I vote for the question? Let's vote.
Yes, the, we're going to, we're going to vote. The motion on the floor is to adopt G2 as it stands. Okay, I'm, I'm going to start, um, where did I start last time? I think I.
You started with me last time.
Okay, so Mrs. Timmer?
I'll vote no, and I'm going to work on wording.
Yes. Mr. Missions, yes? Mr. Wilder?
No.
Mrs. Lowry?
No.
And Mr. Connor?
No.
Okay, so, uh, G2 is still on the table. Is anyone going to propose a rewording of G2?
Um, I can give it a shot real quick. The, I guess the proposal would be, um, to.
That was just, that was, that was to adopt it. We did not decide, we did not decide to adopt it. Doesn't mean we rejected it, it just means we have not yet decided to adopt it.
Can I speak to, can I speak to something?
He's speaking.
I'd, I'd like to hear what Mr. Connor has to say.
Um, like when we have the words in unfunded services, some of our, some of our positions are unfunded mandates by the state, so that would be, that's too vague.
Yeah.
Um, so, because we have positions that, and I believe some just got, um, voted on this last General Assembly, so that could possibly add some positions, so.
I've got the rewording. I've got the rewording.
So we want, I definitely don't want to, um, take that out.
I've got the rewording.
Okay, how do you want to reword it?
Um, that the new superintendent should publicly report an audit on staff growth within the first year, right?
Should publicly report?
Because it took me a year to finally get an answer out of, out of our interim superintendent, finally, and I appreciate that. Um, and that the, uh, our recommendation is that, that the city council and school board work together to ensure we meet all compliance measures to protect state and federal funding for Lynchburg City Schools.
So let's see. The new superintendent should publicly report an audit of staff growth. Are we keeping the unfunded services part?
No.
Striking that out. Audit curriculum to meet new federal guidelines?
No, no, it was, it's just audit, I, I, I do believe as hard as it was to get that information, it's valuable for everybody to know.
So you wanted to just refer to an audit of staff growth?
And then the second part of that was that the city council and school board will work together to ensure we are compliant.
If we experience a risk.
For all federal funding.
I want to hear from Dr. Kober.
Okay, sorry.
All right, um, folks, I'm the only person in this room that has nine bosses. I don't want 16.
Hmm.
Okay? Um, and, uh, I don't think that it's set up that way. I report to the school board. I don't report to city council. And by trying to do that, by making the new superintendent report out on this, uh, you could potentially scare away a new superintendent.
Fair point.
Because if this goes public, I would look at that and say, I'm going to withdraw my application.
Yeah.
Fair point, and, and, and I'm willing to, I'm willing to accept that change.
There's been no second to this motion. I recommend, does somebody want to second the motion to pursue a rewording of G2?
I'm pursuing a rewording, but I was going to ask to remove that first part of the rewording. So it has two components.
It's a one-year question, but I'm okay, I'm okay, I'm okay letting it go, based on what Dr. Kober just told us.
So, is there a motion on the floor to delete G2?
So I, I still think we need to pursue G2 in a way that we say that city council and the school board will work together to ensure we are compliant to receive all.
Well, we've already adopted E2 that says this committee or a similar one will continue meeting quarterly to discuss cost savings in both city and school resources. I think that more or less covers.
Can I add some late-breaking news that I don't know everybody in this room might have picked up? Earlier today, uh, the U.S. Department of Education issued a memorandum to all state superintendents that they have to certify that same thing within the coming portions of that. I haven't read it, I just got it at 4:45. Uh, right now, the state superintendent's looking at it in conjunction with other people to determine how we're going to meet that requirement. So there's something along the lines of verifying certain components, uh, to the federal government to secure or safely secure federal funding. But just so everybody knows, our primary federal funding are our title grants and our special education funding. There are other grants that we might go after, uh, for competitive grants, but Title 1 and, uh, the special education monies are the true federal flow-through monies that come from the U.S. Department of Education currently through the State Department of Education to the school divisions. And roughly, I think it makes up, um, around 12 million, could be as high as 14 of the total 130 million dollars.
Title 1 funds and things like that.
Title 1, Title 2, there's a little bit of Title 3, a little bit of Title 4, and then the other big chunk is the special education.
And our, um, our competitive was like 21st century and those types.
21st century no longer exists. Our competitive grants are the school-based mental health grants, the behavior support grants, things like that, that are really just grants that you get for three-to-five-year periods to pursue specific initiatives.
I would like to move that we strike G2.
Second.
Discussion?
No.[1691.63]
No.
No discussion? Do you have something to say?
No, I think we discussed it enough, and I think as Dr. Copeland said, sometimes we try to make things that nobody wants to come to Lynchburg. No superintendent, no city manager, no city attorney, they're going to run away because of all this confusion.
So you're in, you're in support of striking G2?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's just move on.
Further discussion?
Yeah, because who must have come to this? I wouldn't want to.
Mrs. Timmer?
I, I'm going to vote with you all to strike, but I do just want to speak to the efforts that Mr. Missions is trying to make. Even though I have often approached things differently, I think there is a huge value in recognizing that there are areas that we are not compliant with our own code when it comes to the audit committee. There are areas where we are not emphasizing or focusing or aligning with certain things that are coming down as national mandates. And so it's important to be cognizant of that. It's important to have it on the record. It's important to hold ourselves accountable to that. So I'm, I'm supportive of the efforts. I don't agree with the particular wording of the motion and how it originally came about, and I'll vote against the motion in this case. But I do just want to speak to the value of the effort of what is being brought to, to the table.
And I concur with that. That's, it's already on our minds.
Yep.
It's already on our minds.
Mr. Missions?
So I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Timmer. And, and, and just, just, just so we're clear, I, I think that it, you know, I worked for the city for 14 years. You worked for the school division for 30, 31. My wife works for the school division. You know, there's a vast storehouse of knowledge right there. There's one right here. I know because I've experienced how the city doesn't comply with the, their own rules. I've seen it. And the days of turning our heads to that are over. We've got to be accountable to ourselves. We've got to be accountable to the citizens. We cannot look away and pretend that we're following the rules when we're not.
But I believe that
And, and, and I think that that's, and, and I just think that that is something valuable, and I appreciate what you had to say with that. And I think we need to continue, both on the city council side and the school board side. And that's why I appreciate so much what you all have done to hold staff accountable, to follow the rules and do the
The motion on the floor is to strike G2. A yes vote means we kill G2, and no vote means it stays alive. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes, uh, let's see, Connor said yes. Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Missions?
No.
And Mrs. Timmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. So G2 is dead, so the recommendations we have retained are A, 3, 5, and 7, B1, C1, and E2. I think we are done. What will happen now is I will write up a final document incorporating those recommendations as a draft for our final report. I will circulate it by email to all the committee members asking for comments. And in that, we've got a couple of weeks to get this done because we've got till the 29th. I'm very optimistic, but that by that point, we will have, the committee will have agreed on the wording of the final document, and then we will present it to the combined school board and city councils at the joint meeting on the 29th. Mr. Missions?
I would like to thank you for your efforts. You have worked very hard on this. And with that, I would like to make one final motion that you present this to the joint committee. And I'll make that as a motion.
I would actually ask Dr. Day
Dr. Day to be the presenter.
Comfort level, but
I'm willing to do that, and, yeah, I will volunteer, okay?
You'll volunteer, then I will draw my motion.
Okay.
But I appreciate the hard work you've done. You've done an excellent job, Dr. Day, and, and I just want to thank you for that.
All right, last, are you wanting to say something?
Just thank you all for your time. Thank you for your service for our community, for our citizens. Thank you for chairing the committee. I really appreciate all the efforts you're doing for our city because our children are so important, and thank you. God bless you. God bless you. God, God be with you. God be with you. I'm praying for you. I'm praying, God knows I'm praying for you.
Okay.
Yes, Lord.
We've started roll call. We just had our first comment. We'll go back over here. Mr. Connor?
I want to thank the city staff. I know we've been hard on y'all, but we really appreciate the hard work. I appreciate you being here, Mr. Attorney, even though you haven't done any work since you've been here.
He's been chuckling and rolling his eyes.
And I want to thank our staff as well for helping us to facilitate this.
And I, I echo that. Thank you, everybody that's come. Thank you, audience, for support and coming. And, you know, and again, Dr. Copeland, thank you for all that you're doing. It's, it's, you're above and beyond.
Comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, everybody, Ms. Sam. Sam, thank you. You are, you are absolutely, you're, you're here late. We appreciate it. Thanks for the work you're doing. But no, really appreciate everybody being here these late nights and all the work that went into this. And I think that this is something that we can, you know, really stand behind. And, and I, I hope that the school board and the city council take these recommendations seriously.
Okay, so this committee has sent
You forgot, Ms. Timmer.
I, I need a roll call.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I know. We all need to go. And it's largely echoing, but thank y'all. We, we really can't make the decisions that we make without being able to gather information. And I really appreciate staff on both sides with that, and thank you. I also do just want to comment. I spoke with Mayor Taylor, and he asked that we just publicly affirm his value for meeting with the school board and whatever that looks like for
Public affirm what?
His value for meeting with the school board, because that came up in an earlier meeting that he
His value? I don't know what that means.
He loves meeting with y'all.
Okay.
And he wants to prioritize it, and so whether that's monthly or quarterly, whatever that established cadence needs to be. He, he is amenable to that and just wanted to, to have that included in the comments as far as this discussion, so.
Okay, that concludes roll call. We've got, the only meeting in, that we have is a joint meeting with the full school board and the full city council on April 29th. Otherwise, except for writing the final document, our work is done. Thank you to everybody, and meeting adjourned. Good evening.